The time has come for the Monday, February 1, 2021, Virtual Regular Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Okay, one more time. Alderman Florian.
Here.
Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozzio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
Invocation will be given by Pastor Attilio Masturis from the First Latin Baptist Church at 560 Belvedere Road, Waukegan, Illinois 60085. Immediately following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, thank you, sir.
Thank you for inviting me to pray for that meeting today, Mayor.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. It's a pleasure to do that. You want me to do that right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the wonderful opportunity to come to your presence and ask you guidance and blessing for this meeting. We thank you for Mayor Cunningham and everybody else in the meeting, Lord. I ask you to be with them, guide them. We know that the city of Waukegan, as many other cities, are going through a very difficult time. But we're trusting in your mercy. We're trusting in your love, that you trust that you will, that you will give them the wisdom that they need to conduct these meetings and be able to bless the people in Waukegan. Your Lord be with them, guide them, give them the wisdom, the love, the compassion that they need to bless the people in Waukegan. We thank you for the opportunity to pray for the council meeting today. Be with them, Father. We ask you to do all the things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. Oh, congratulations tonight for our very own Waukegan City Clerk, Ms. Janet Kilkelly, who has a Waukegan Park District Commissioner, who is a Waukegan Park District Commissioner, was awarded by the Illinois Association of Park Districts, IAPD, with the Mike Cassidy Commissioner's Community Service Award. Clerk Kilkelly received this award, which recognizes an Illinois Commissioner who volunteers service to their community, emulates the vision and voluntary efforts demonstrated by the late Freeport Park District Commissioner, Mr. Mike Cassidy, to improve the quality of life for those in their community. Let's give it up for Janet. I think we see her. One of her, one of the awards right here in front. Aldermen, if you get a chance, will certainly be up. Of course, we are also proud of the tremendous asset that Janet brings to Waukegan and her volunteer in as a Park Board Commissioner. Government consolidation. I'm proud to announce that through our joint efforts with the county, Lake County Government, and Village Beach Park, we have successfully consolidated the Beach Park Drainage District, which was an unnecessary unit of government. We delivered on the bipartisan promise to eliminate outdated layers of government, and our residents can be proud that we have worked together to streamline these functions by consolidating these redundant units of government while still maintaining the expected level of excellent service. The city of Waukegan, in the Village Park and in the Village of Beach Park, will eliminate an annual drainage district tax assessment on properties within the former district. Residents will no longer see this item on their tax bill beginning next year. Our snow fighters. As you all know, we were hit hard this past 48 hours with about a foot, maybe a foot and a half of snow. But I want to thank everyone who paid attention to the snow routes in the alternate parking. Because this helped our snow fighters, that's what we call them, the snow fighters, the Public Works Department, was able to do an amazing job these last 48 hours. I spoke with Mike several times. I think the first time we spoke was about 3:00, then 7:00, 9:00, 12:00, and he woke me up then at 6:00. But they did an amazing job. More importantly, the residents in our community did a fantastic job as well. So thank you, Mike Hewitt, to you, your entire team, what you're able to do. It was noticeably seen when you rode the streets in Waukegan. COVID-19. Waukegan is now in Tier 1 mitigation. And I'm beyond excited. Our restaurants and bars are open for indoor dining at 25 people or 25% capacity per room. We're moving in the right direction, everybody. But remember, open does not mean over. Continue to wear your mask. Wash your hands on a regular basis. And let's be cautious of our social distancing, whether in public places or even at home around family and friends. To add to that, I was proud to join Governor Pritzker, Lake County Chairman Sandy Harp, Health Department Executive Director Mark Pfister, Senators Bush and Johnson, Representative Yingeland, and others last week as we toured the indoor vaccination facility at the county fairground in Graves Lake. It is crucial that we all sign up for the, sign up to get vaccinated. As many of you saw, I received my second shot of the vaccine last week because it is critical. Matter of fact, it is beyond important that we set an example, especially for those communities that are black and brown. Because those communities are the most, are the ones who are most hesitant about getting vaccinated. And for those who do not know, one of the reasons particularly African Americans feel this way sometimes because back in, wow, probably 30, maybe 50 years ago, our government did some experimenting on black people. And that simplest experiment is still lingering around in the heads of people of color. And now that this COVID-19 is here with us, some of that is still there. But I believe that our government is different back then today than it was back then. In fact, the matter is, we must all try to get vaccinated as fast as possible. In the examples that I'm setting and other African Americans sent throughout this country, it is critical that we let people know it's okay to be vaccinated for this COVID-19 pandemic that has crucified our country, if not the world. So I stand proud to be that example, not just for African Americans and Latinos, but Waukegan, Illinois. With that being said, we all must sign up to get vaccinated. And the website to do that is www. We must sign up and get vaccinated if we truly want to rid ourselves of this pandemic. It's up to us now. We have Johnson &amp; Johnson now, Moderna, Pfizer. The Biden administration has committed to making sure that these doses get out to our country, but we gotta know who they are. Please. And I'm asking all the Aldermen on your neighborhood watch or Facebook account or Instagram, push this information out. They will believe in us. City stickers. Waukegan Vehicle City stickers are on sale now at the discounted early bird price, which extends through the end of March. Because COVID-19 is still with us, I'm asking everyone to go online to purchase vehicle stickers. Information about vehicle stickers is available on our website City Hall will have additional hours on Saturday in February from 8:00 AM to noon. Stickers are also available at the following locations, which charge a fee for service. Let me give you the locations real quick. Right here. It would be the currency exchanges, Super Fresh Market, Belvedere and Green Bay Currency Exchange, 2850 Belvedere Road, New Grand and Green Bay Currency Exchange, 3200 Grand Avenue, Washington and Lewis Currency Exchange, 1817 Washington Street, New Washington and Sheridan Latino Currency Exchange, 126 Washington Street, Mon 2 LLC Currency Exchange, 225 South Green Bay Road, and Super Fresh Grocery Market, Grocery Store, 1700 North Lewis. All of this will be on our website, correct? Mr. Motley? All right. Black History Month. Black History Month started today in the Waukegan Park District. College of Lake County, Waukegan Public Library, Lake County Forest Reserve have several virtual events lined up. Please visit our website for other information. Aldermen in public, I have three more PSAs for you. And it's involving the YWCA. This came directly from the Executive Director from the YWCA. And it says, Dear friends and partners, we are pleased to announce that YWCA Metropolitan Chicago and YWCA Lake County have merged. We will now operate and serve Lake County, Illinois communities under the name YWCA Metropolitan Chicago. With both organizations having been part of a national network of YWCA's in sharing the mission of eliminating racism and empowering women, this integration would allow for a more comprehensive set of direct services to be delivered across the region. We want to assure that existing YWCA program across Lake County will remain in place, including childcare resources and referrals, youth development, economic empowerment, health and wellness, racial justice services. We do not anticipate any interruptions in those services. The merger also means that we will be bringing over YWCA services to Lake County, such as additional childcare provider services, workforce development services, mental health services, workplace diversity, equity, and inclusion services. If you have any questions about accessing services or about the merger, please contact Gussie Daniels Best thing to do probably is write this number down. The number is 773-332-4453. Waukegan Township's Assistance Program. This was given to me by Township Supervisor, Ms. Patricia Jones. It is COVID-19 impacting your finances. Are you struggling to pay your rent, mortgage, utility? If eligible, we are here to help. This is from our Waukegan Township Assistance Program. And it is for mortgage and rental assistance, utility assistance, prescription assistance, funeral and burial assistance, transportation, state IDs, employment expenses, and employment assistance via our employment specialists. Again, that's our very own Waukegan Township Assistance Program. And that's administered by the Waukegan Township of Waukegan. Last but not least, Alderman, what a great, I call it kudos, message that I received by Mr. Jim McMcCarthy. And it reads, Dear Mayor, my name is Jim Mc McCarthy. I retired from Waukegan Police Department in 1997. The reason I'm writing this letter is that on this Christmas Eve morning, at about 2:00 AM, I collapsed at home and had to call for the paramedics for help. I was unable to get up from the floor. My family didn't seem to help for several minutes and weren't able to help, which required our calling for a rescue squad. I want to compliment your fire department, paramedics, and firefighters who responded to my home for their prompt response considering the time of night and for their actions and professionalism while at home. They transported me to Vista East, where I was diagnosed with severe pneumonia. The personnel that responded were Station 5 Lieutenant Ward, Firefighter McGrane, Firefighter Bake, Station 4 Lieutenant Vasquez, Firefighter Babi, and Firefighter Crude. Again, thank you to all of them. I thought, whenever I get these kind of compliments about our services that we provide to the resident of this community, I think it's important that we let our employees know that we appreciate what they do. So to Chief Bridges, please send that compliment to all of, to that particular team, but to all of your firefighters who service the city of Waukegan. And that goes out, Public Works, we cannot say enough they were able to do over the last 48 hours. And certainly, our police department and city service and water department. On the bottom of my heart, and I know, I think I can say this from all the Aldermen, we appreciate what you do to provide the level of service to our residents, business community, and other business partners. Thank you, God bless. Those are the end of Mayor's comments. Item number two, Resolutions, Proclamations, Presentations. There being none. Item number three, Audience Time. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have five letters today, and they will be read by David Motley of the PR Department, and they will be timed three minutes each. Thank you so much. Mr. Motley?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mayor, council members. The first letter tonight is from Carmen Elliott. Dear Mayor Sam Cunningham and Waukegan Aldermen, in solidarity with the recent Black Lives Matter protests, I'm writing to bring your attention to the death of Marcellus Stinet under the oversight of the Waukegan Police Department. On October 20, 2020, 19-year-old Marcellus Stinet and his 20-year-old girlfriend, Tafara Williams, were parked outside of Tafara's mother's house when their vehicles were reported to police as suspicious. A Waukegan police officer pulled up beside them and without activating his car lights or siren. Tafara opened the window and turned on her car's interior lights to indicate that the couple had no weapons and were not doing anything illegal. The officer, however, recognized Marcellus and verbally harassed them. When Tafara asked if they were free to leave, the officer took a few steps away from the car. Taking that as her cue, Tafara drove away slowly. The officer did not follow them. A short time later, however, another police car started to chase them. After about 20 seconds, Tafara tried to pull over and hit a telephone pole wire. The officer pulled up next to her car when she tried to reverse. Upon seeing her reverse, the officer immediately opened fire, wounding both of them and causing Tafara to crash into a building. The couple was dragged out of the car by officers and were left bleeding on the ground without any medical attention for eight minutes. Though they were taken to the local hospital, Marcellus died soon after. Marcellus did not deserve to die. The officer should have never fired at their car. Tafara and Marcellus were unarmed throughout the entire counter, and they never tried to hurt the police. The Waukegan Police Department has made a step in the right direction by firing the foremost offending police officer, but this is not enough. We cannot allow police, whether presently employed or not, to kill unarmed people without any repercussions. Furthermore, we must fix our broken system that enables police brutality by funding alternative methods of safety for our communities. I ask that this case be thoroughly investigated and that Dante Salinas and James Keating, the police officers involved, be held accountable for their actions in criminal court. Firing Salinas is not enough. Additionally, Waukegan must increase police accountability by providing transparency on the use of force against subjects with statistics on the race, gender, disability, religion, and age of subjects made publicly available. Waukegan should also work to have the state of Illinois follow Colorado's reforms in blocking qualified immunity as a defense for police officers in state court. I also ask for the Waukegan Police Department's budget to be further downsized, demilitarize the police force, and that the money instead be used for community services and alternative crisis interventions, especially for the homeless and mentally ill. Doing so will make living in Waukegan safer for minorities who suffer the brunt of police brutality. The next letter is from Terry Byrne. Why are there no laws or restrictions in Waukegan banning large house parties? I called the Waukegan Police recently and asked about this due to a big late-night neighborhood party. The street was lined with cars and mostly young people without masks filling in a home. It had to be a super-spreader event. The police said they could do nothing about it. It was shocking. It was disappointing. It makes no sense. I see Chicago has this ban in place and police reinforce it. I thought the state of Illinois reinforced bans on large gatherings too. Why are there no bans or laws or restrictions in place for this right now to protect Waukegan residents? Kind regards, Terry Byrne. The next is from Lucy Leguizamo. Dear City Clerk, I am submitting the attached document on behalf of our WHS students to be read in public comments and circulated to the Alderman at tonight's meeting. Thanks in advance. Let me know if you are not able to open the attachment. And then the next item is from WHS students Ashley Carrillo and Isam Hussani. You'll have to restart that mic. Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, Alderman, Alderwoman, and community. Our names are Ashley Carrillo and Isam Hussani. We are this year's project leaners for the Valentine's for Veterans event. Last year was the first year we led the Waukegan High School JROTC student body and community through the Valentine's for Veterans program. We had about 300 participants attend an hour or three-hour window to make 5,840 quality handmade Valentine's Day cards for veterans. We wish that we could host the exact same event this year, but due to unprecedented times, we are adapting and being bulldog strong to introduce an innovative way to participate in this year's Valentine's for Veterans event. We would like to invite you all and the community to participate in one of the two options, a virtual Valentine's for Veterans event or to pick up kits to make handmade cards from to comfort of your homes. We'll talk about the virtual event first. The community and yourselves can access the Google Slides template and instructions through our Facebook page, While you're visiting our page, be sure to click on the Like and Follow buttons. Don't forget to share our page and help us spread the word throughout the week. We will also post tutorials, additional information, and testimonials. The virtual Valentine's for Veterans event will run from February 1st through February 6th. Now, let's discuss the second option. We will provide kits for those that would like to make handmade cards from the comfort of their home. Anyone can pick up a kit on February 3rd, Wednesday, or February 4th, Thursday, at Thomas Jefferson or Miguel Juarez Middle Schools between 2:30 and 4:30. We are asking for anyone that wants to pick up a kit to please register at the link provided on our Facebook page. Once the cards are completed, we ask for the handmade cards to be dropped off at the same two locations, Thomas Jefferson or Miguel Juarez Middle Schools, on Monday, February 8th, or Tuesday, February 9th, between 2:00 PM and 4:00 PM. Virtual cards will be printed and collated with the handmade cards. These cards will be distributed to our local VA hospital, homes, and nursing homes, and then distributed to other service members across the nation by North Chicago's Midwest Veterans Closet. Many of our Waukegan alums have or are currently serving. It would be great surprise if they are recipient of one of our cards. On behalf of the Waukegan High School JROTC program, we appreciate your time. Please help us by promoting this event to the community. The fourth submission is from Bernard Ramos. Ms. Kilkelly, get your Mayor Cunningham checked up. Check him. He is over there threatening other Aldermen that he just supported at their ice cream social. Mayor, was Keith Turner's ice cream good? I saw you in some photos at his crib. Back to Ms. Kilkelly, I supported you, Janet, but you're losing your integrity running with this corrupt mayor. Wow, leave him or lose our votes. You are who you hang with. Mr. Turner, if you don't sue Mr. Cunningham or call him out, who will? Mr. Cunningham is threatening public officials who don't support him? What is this middle school student council? Cunningham has to go, and anyone who supports him. May God bless Waukegan. And the fifth and final submission is from Margaret Carrasco. Hundreds of Waukegan Latino immigrant frontline service workers, Waukegan firefighters, police officers, and teachers have been disproportionately impacted by this pandemic. Many have become severely sick and others have died. Despite this, Waukegan's Mayor Sam Cunningham has been photographed getting the first and second COVID vaccine, a blatant display of selfishness providing or proving he doesn't care about his residents, but only him. Sam Cunningham did not qualify to take the vaccine. He clearly violated state regulations, and a complaint has been lodged against him and the facility that illegally allowed him to get in front of those who really need it. Waukegan residents, please call and complain, demand answers. And that concludes tonight's Audience Time, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Motley. In the event that anyone would like to review those letters, they are posted on our agenda online. Please avail yourself to those at any time. Thank you.
Got a motion by Alderman Mozzio and second by Alderman Kirkwood for contend agenda, items A through H. Are any questions in the motion? Items for A, Motion to Approve Regular Meeting Minutes from Monday, January 19, 2021. Items for B, Motion to Approve Resolution Authorizing Sale of Prop located 2101/07 Greentown Lane by the City of Waukegan with Affordable Housing Corporation of Lake County Under Turns, Conditions, CDBG Funding. Items for C, Motion to Approve Resolution Authorizing Lease of 24 Parking Spaces to the College of Lake County during the duration of construction. Items for D, Motion to Approve Vendor Payments dated 1/2/2021, total amount of $1,0079,175.26. Items for E, Motion to Approve Regular Payroll dated 2/29/2021, a total amount of $1,577,467.87. Items for F, Motion to Approve PD Holiday Buyback Days dated 2/29/2021, total amount of $1,001.18. Items for G, Motion to Approve Comptime Cash Out dated 2/29/2021, a total amount of $137.66. a total amount of $137.66. Items for H, motion to approve resolution approving a proposed settlement of lawsuit filed by Oscar Man Martinez this is discussed closed session of the government operation oversight committee, November 2nd, 2020. There's a motion on the floor being read. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
My apologies, ma'am. Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass and carry. Item five, there being none. Item six, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Florian, to retain Johnson Consulting provided economic impact study regarding potential casino found square pursuant to section 2-458, parentheses I, parentheses IV, the professional services waiver, to competitive bidding process for the total amount retainer 28,500, held over by Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor.
I'm ready to vote.
All right. Any other questions in the motion? Alderman Turner.
Yes, so if we're going to do this, do we have to use this outfit? Can we not use some other, put it out to bid or something? I, I just, I'm just starting to have a real problem with these contracts going to the same people over and over again with limited oversight and change orders and all that stuff that's going on. And if, if we're gonna do it, I'd really like to see some other folk be involved or at least have the opportunity to be involved. Get on it.
Right. Alderman, I'm sorry, I apologize. Sorry. Are you finished?
I was finished, so thank you.
Okay. Yeah, there's a motion on the floor and a second. That's where we at. They can vote it up or down tonight. Sounds like everybody is ready. We go from there. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Seager.
I'm going to abstain from this.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Abstain.
Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Four yeses, two nos, two abstains. One, two, three, four. I'm sorry, five guesses.
Business, motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion pass and carry. Alderman, you got it. Congratulations, Alderman. All right. Motion is pass and carry. Small victories. Yes, sir. Item seven, new business, none, there being none. Item eight, there being none. Item nine, Alderman's time. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to reiterate what the mayor said about the snow and the alternate parking. I'd like to add that anyone who has a fire hydrant in their yard might want to think about trying to dig it out. As my husband was telling me, the home you save may be your own. That's a lot of snow. They, they pretty much are probably pretty buried. Although I think we've done better with the alternate parking. There are some still, some areas that are having an issue with that, so please pay attention. I posted it again on my Facebook page today. Put it out in Spanish also, so hopefully people are starting to get the message because it does create quite a mess when cars stay out on the road when we're trying to plow, so. I'd also like to reiterate what the mayor said about our COVID situation, although it's excellent that we're in tier one and places are open. With these new variants coming, I think we have some challenges ahead. So I think we need to stay vigilant and, and still be very careful. Masks, distance, washing your hands, et cetera. And lastly, I'd like to say that I appreciate the apologies that were given last week. I hope that in the future, we can continue to respectfully disagree with each other and keep our, our discourse professional. So, thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I'd like to say that I am hoping that Johnson does a great job. They've included the things that I've asked them to do. I know they've done great work for other cities. I was a little disappointed in their last report, so I'm kind of looking forward to this one and let's see what it, what it shows us. I want to offer my condolences to Abet Ewing and the Ewing family for the passing of her father, who had COVID not once but twice, and Ygenia Briscoe for the passing of her husband, and Yashen Inchworm Phillips for, that's her uncle as well. So my deepest condolences to the families. I want to talk about speeding in our city right now. We have some stretches that people are just zooming along these streets. We have ice, we have snow, and people are not considering the traffic situations. They are running stop signs because they can't stop. So please consider that the, the person, the life that you save may be somebody you know. So please, this is all, we're, we're all in one community. Think about your neighbor and who you're hurting when you do this. Is it worth that extra two seconds that you're saving? Last, I want to talk a little bit about COVID in the sense that I think, you know, we've been through this now for about a year. And I think we seriously need to start being a kinder and gentler community and looking at some of the people that are most affected by COVID. And that is our seniors and our teenagers. We're struggling with teenagers right now going through massive depression and anxiety. And our seniors, who many of people can't get into the buildings that their parents or relatives are living in, again, massively suffering through depression and anxiety. So if you have the opportunity, call seniors, talk to them. Make sure that they're taking their medications correctly, that they're eating correctly, because it can have lasting impacts. Same with our teenagers. If you know of a teenager that's struggling or a family that's struggling, please let's work as a community to help each other out. This is our chance to be the Waukegan that I know we can be and be kind in a community and support each other in whatever way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate Janet Kin Kelly for your service award. Congratulations. Thank you for having such a heart of servant hood. And then too, I'd like to offer condolence to those that lost their loved ones. My prayers go out to you. And thirdly, as had already been mentioned, thank you constituents and citizens that really follow the parking ordinance and thank you Public Works for working hard. Now, I understand, Mayor, you said they were out at 9:00, 12:00, and 6:00. Did I hear you say that?
No, Mike, those are the times he called me throughout.
Well, sorry, okay.
No, they started, Public Works started about, I think Mike called them in about 4:00, about 4 o'clock, and they went all the way through, nine man crewed in the rest, but yes.
Yeah, yes. So thank you, Public Works, for all the hard work that you do. And then also, as it was mentioned, we're entering tier one, or we are in tier one, so watch. Make sure you wear your mask, make sure you are practicing social distancing and washing your hands, as had already been mentioned. And those of you that, I want to thank those of you that participated in renaming the middle school Webster Middle School and Jefferson Middle School District 66. You know, the deadline was really yesterday, the 31st. So the announcement is to come, the renaming of those schools. And then also want to thank Pat Jones and Waukegan Township for reminding us that you're here to contribute to our community and serve and providing support. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Seager.
I too would like to thank Mike Hewitt and all the employees over there at Public Works. Great job on these streets and alleys. You guys are good. And that's all there is to it. Thank you very much. I really appreciate all, all the hard work. Thank you.
Pass.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Once again, congratulations goes out to the entire Public Works Division for all the good work they did with removing the snow. Also, on February the 4th, we'll be having a Neighborhood Watch meeting for the historic Genesee area. Also, on February the 9th, we'll have our Fourth Ward Quarterly Meeting from, on February 9th, from 6:00 to 7:30. Also, just a reminder regarding COVID, as many of you have said before, we need to continue to wear a mask, wash our hands, practice social distancing, and not be involved in large gatherings. Also, in terms of the alternative, you know, the alternate parking residents in the Fourth Ward, we need to adhere this. I got your calls regarding, you know, being plowed in, but you, you need to make sure you're moving your car so that we can go down one side and then the other. In those areas I went and visited, I put out some flyers that will be going out tomorrow for you, but you need to make sure that you adhere to that. We're going to be getting more snow on Thursday. So we ask that you pay close attention to that. Also, I would ask that all the residents, you know, get involved in the quarterly meeting. So if you have questions regarding the alternate parking, as well as I know some of the areas were ticketed, but you need to make sure that you're practicing that when there is no snow, so that when the snow comes, we can continue to do that. Once again, it's important that, as a council, you know, we do work together and not just in words, but in deeds. Many times, we say one thing and we do another. It's important that we respect one another. And as always, Waukegan is a great city. Whether you were born here or moved here, it's important that we, as leaders in the city, help others to understand their responsibility to help us make this even a greater city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Newsome. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So here in the Sixth Ward, I just want to reiterate, was already outspoken by several aldermen and the mayor regarding the alternate parking. Those hours have been extended basically from midnight until noon every day. I have posted, I want to thank Susanna Figaroa for providing that flyer. So it's posted up on my, both my Facebook accounts as well as my Nextdoor account, what the hours are as a reminder. And I'll probably get out a blast email on that one as well. I want to acknowledge all of our city employees. We always give credit to, and, and I cannot speak highly enough for the police department, the fire department, the public works department, but we have a number of other city employees who work in the background who have faced numerous challenges, both personally and on the job with this COVID pandemic. And I just want to thank them for their efforts and, and overcoming those challenges. And I want to also bring particular attention to our animal control, which is a premier animal control department in the United States and, and, and other departments across the country are looking to Waukegan's animal control for guidance and recommendations on how to improve their operations. We are a no-kill animal control, and that is due entirely to the hard work of Susan Elliott and her team, Nicole and Amber, and, and in partnership with a number of animal rescue organizations. It's not, and, and they believe me, they don't do just dogs. There's cats and, and raccoons and possums, and, and they're handling all kinds of animals. So kudos and a big thank you to Waukegan Animal Control. So during the snowstorm, again, our guys in Public Works did a fabulous job. But I got to recognize one of my neighbors. You know, I was out in the neighborhood. I went out the house so fast going to help people. I was pushing cars, I was shoveling snow, I was coordinating. I had a team of my own out there helping people and I was coordinating their efforts and, and giving them direction. And yeah, I forgot to do my own snow. So I was quite surprised when I came home to take a break. And my neighbor, Mr. Alvin Hemphill, across the street, has sent a crew to my home to clear my driveway, my sidewalks, and my porch. And I really appreciate, you know, I, I just, I never even think to ask for help for myself, and I totally forgot to do my own work because I was helping other people in the neighborhood. And I just want to make sure that Alvin knows that I appreciate it. I too am going to have a ward meeting that'll be this Thursday, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And the information's out in blast emails. Also, I will post it up on social media. Encourage everyone to join. We'll be talking about a number of different things, important statistics, including this epidemic of shots fired being heard across the city. I'll give you a highlight. We've had about 15 calls for shots fired in the Sixth Ward in just one month, and there were 84 of those calls in the year of 2020, in Sixth Ward alone. So I know others, some folks don't think it's, it's important, but I and many of our neighbors are deeply concerned, and we're going to talk about that. Another teaser for you. I, I do have an idea how we can work to mitigate that, and I have joined forces with our illustrious Alderman Taylor, and we are working on, we've got the, the strategy. And now we're beginning to work on the tactics on how we can fund that. So Alderman Taylor, thanks for assisting me in that regard. And that, that's it for tonight. Thank you all very much for your time and your attention. Good night.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations on your award. That is a tremendous recognition. And as everyone has already reiterated several times, city stickers are available. Please sign up for the vaccine. That's tremendously important. And, and, and like everyone said, great job, Public Works. You know, the snow that, that we got in, in the last two storms was tremendous. You did a great job. Thank you very much. And my condolences do go out to the Ewing and the Briscoe families. And God bless you and God bless Waukegan. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes Alderman time.
You're muted, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor, was it Ms. Briscoe? Ms. Gris, Ms. Briscoe? That's the young lady that comes to council meeting all the time, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. I will, we'll make sure we get a, a condolences card from the city of Waukegan on, on our behalf, ma'am. Thank you very much. To, I need to add one thing. The Waukegan Township, as you know, they have the program where they go and cut the grass for a lot of our, their seniors and, and shovel the driveway. That was another part of Ms. Jones's programs too for Waukegan Township. And I tell you, there are a lot of people who are, are part of that program, and they just, they hire some young men throughout the year to do that. So a big job on them for that one, particularly over the last 48 hours. As always, Alderman, thank you for the level of service that you provide to our residents, business community, and other business partners. You guys continue to take care. Please, please try to stay healthy. Would say stay home, but that's somewhat difficult in our line of business. God bless you all. Waukegan strong out. There's a motion by Florian, second by Alderman Seager to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Motion pass and carry. Have a great evening, Alderman. Have a great week.
You too.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Bye.